Today is October 26, 2021. It's now 5:30 PM. This meeting of Georgetown County Council is being called to order. We'll ask Councilman Carolina to give us the indication and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening. Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of community. Fill us with your grace as we make decisions that will affect the citizens, businesses, environment, and the future of Georgetown County, and remind us that all that we do as stewards over the land and resources is for the pursuit of truth, for the greater glory of you, and for the service of humanity. We also take this moment to remember a great American general, Colin Powell, for his dedication of life of public service. General Powell's famous Rule Number 13 was perpetual optimism is a force multiplier. Through all the ups and downs of his tenure in the armed services, government, and public service, he remained optimistic about this country's future, and through it all, he remained calm and did it with kindness. We ask of these things in your name, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Carolina. We move on down to the approval of the agenda. There's a recommendation to move two items forward on the meeting agenda. Item 15A, the Nonprofit Spotlight, South Carolina Environmental Law Project, and Item 15B, Employee of the Quarter Recognition. With those recommended changes, is there a motion for approval of the agenda with the noted changes?
So moved.
So moved by Councilman Newton. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Anderson. Any discussion? All in favor? Please raise your hand. Okay. Both carries unanimously. Okay. With that being said, we move down to Item 15A, our Nonprofit Spotlight. This week's featured nonprofit is South Carolina Environmental Law Project. Ms. Amy Armstrong, the executive director.
Council Chairman, I'm sorry. I think there was an error on the agenda. Ms. Armstrong couldn't make it, and we have Ms. Kim Parsons with the Family Justice Center here to present tonight.
Family Justice Center?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So maybe we need to go back and just approve the agenda for... Who's the Nonprofit Spotlight again, Jackie? Family Justice Center? Okay, because I think I said that we would have the Nonprofit Spotlight coming from the South Carolina Environmental Law Project, but it's really coming from Family Justice Center. So can we just approve the agenda again with the recommended changes to Family Justice Center instead of South Carolina Environmental Law Project? Is there a motion to approve the agenda with that recommended change?
Make a motion. We approve the agenda with the recommended changes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Moved by Councilman Newton. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Councilman Anderson. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Okay. All right, motion carries. So we now have the Nonprofit Spotlight. Thank you.
Hello. Thank you for inviting me to come tonight and speak to the council and to everyone here in the audience. My name is Kim Parsons, and I'm the executive director of the Family Justice Center of Georgetown and Ory Counties. It's an honor to be here, and it's especially important because October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. I just want to share just a little bit with you about what our agency does provide. We are a domestic violence agency that provides services to victims of violence in both Georgetown and Ory Counties. We have been here and providing services since 2007. For anyone who is seeking any type of services related to abuse or violence within a relationship, they can reach out to us at our Georgetown office, or we have a satellite office in Ory County. And we also have a safe house here, which is at an undisclosed location in Georgetown. And it is a small shelter, but with COVID restrictions, we have had to reduce our capacity. But we do have the ability to place folks into hotels or other living arrangements if they're trying to flee from a domestic violence situation. Our clients, when they come in to receive services, not only receive if it's shelter that they're seeking, they do receive counseling services, case management services, and court advocacy. And in addition to those items, we also have a housing case manager, which will help folks as they are trying to flee those relationships, find their own independent living. We encourage everyone to engage in counseling services because we know that the fleeing and coming into the shelter is really just the Band-Aid, and the hard work is going to come once they get settled and they're not kind of operating in that chaotic situation to be able to focus on what they need to do to move forward. We offer services to adults, and we also offer services and encourage their children to participate in services. If you know of anyone that is in a domestic violence relationship, please let them know that we are here in both counties, and we offer those services 24/7. We have a 24/7 hotline that anyone can call any time of the day and speak with someone who can help them with accessing our services. We want to let everyone else... We want to let everybody know that we are here because we do find that oftentimes when we come to do speaking engagements, there are still people in our communities that don't know that we're here. And it's so important to spread the word that we are here to help people who are victims of domestic violence. I know I have a very small window of time to talk and share, so I will wrap this up. But please reach out to us if you would like any additional information about the Family Justice Center. You can contact our Georgetown or our Ory County office. We also have two court advocates that are located in the Ory County Courthouse. And if you need to speak with someone outside of our 9 to 5 business hours, please contact our shelter hotline. And I appreciate you inviting me here once again, and it was especially important to come during October as this is National Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Parsons, for all that you do for Georgetown and Ory County, really. We'll now have the Employee of the Quarter Recognition, Mr. Ackerman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's my pleasure to present to you all tonight, Mr. Chairman, members of council, our Employee of the Quarter for the Third Quarter of '21, Mr. Harold West, who is towering behind me. Mr. West is our official title Special Project Supervisor. He works in our Public Works Division. And Harold is the person who tackles all the weird, crazy stuff that goes on in the world of public works, road maintenance, drainage projects, you name it. He's recently took it upon himself to save the county some money. He's cleared all sites for three new fire substations, cleared power line right-of-ways for us. If you name it, Harold does it for the county. He's also really, really good at thinking outside of the box. He works in conjunction a lot of times with school district projects, DOT projects, resolving issues that may come up. He does such a good job that people in the public actually go out of their way to call us and give us compliments. Director Funnies' phone rings a lot, and it's, you know, what a good job Harold does, and how great he worked with those folks. He really knows how to deal with the public. In addition to everything that Harold does with Public Works, he's also an extremely valuable member of our volunteer fire department. He volunteers in the Yaw Hannah area under the Plantersville Main Department. That's kind of his home base of operations, but he does work all over the county. Some of the recent things that he's done that really stood out, you know, we had a major fuel spill up on the Waukeemaw Neck, and he actually worked in conjunction with Midway Fire. He happened to note that there was a dump truck loaded with dirt, and he grabbed it and hooked the backhoe up, and they went and got that issue resolved so we can get Highway 17 open. We had a major fire here in Georgetown some months back, and middle of the night, Harold brings in a tracoe and starts knocking the walls down so that it wouldn't spread to the neighboring properties. He's just that kind of person who can really think, and he has a multitude of skills. And for those reasons, he was selected Employee of the Quarter for Third Quarter.
We move down to the public comment section. A public comment period is included on each meeting agenda and shall be limited to 30 minutes. Each speaker will be limited to no more than three minutes. No speaker may yield his or her allotted time to another speaker. Members of the public who wish to address council during the public input period should sign up with a clerk of council before the meeting is called to order. Please note that at the end of your allotted time, a buzzer will sound. Once the buzzer sounds, we ask that you can immediately conclude your comments. Ms. Roach, is there anyone signing up for the public comment period?
Mr. Chairman, we have 10 speakers signed up. The first will be Ms. Cynthia Murray.
Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity to speak. I'm speaking today on facts which are not conspiracies. A fact is divine as a case exposing a state of affairs. Facts may be understood as information that makes a true sentence true. On the other hand, a conspiracy, also known as a plot, is a secret plan or agreement between persons for an unlawful or harmful purpose. Here are some indisputable facts. Ten facts enclosed tonight will vindicate the rezoning case of 14-plus acres of Mr. Goff and reveal neighborhood development exposed properties in close proximity. Proximal to the Goff community, neighborhood-developed areas include the Alston Plantation, Hagley Estates, and Heritage Plantations, all three zoned medium density. Fact number two, the remaining low-density properties in the neighborhood are surrounded by large acreages zoned design development on the future land use map. Fact number three, the Paulie's Plantation, a high-density development to the north, and the Prince George, a planned development to the south, are in close proximity to the Goff parcel. Fact number four, a large section of the Waterford Partnership parcel abutting Highway 17 was rezoned from low-density to design development on the future land use map. Fact five, a large portion of the Prince George planned development contiguous to the Goff parcel was rezoned to forest and agriculture and designated as conservation land. The Goff property abuts the Colony, a planned development of single-family residential homes rezoned to 8,000 square feet residential district R8. The Colony was allowed available lots to be increased from 34 to 49 lots for development. There was no impact presented on traffic. Fact seven, the lower Waukeemaw Neck contains multiple parcels to the east, west, and south in the Highway 17 corridor designated for design development conservation. Fact eight, the porches at Waverly. A medium-density property and development was rezoned MR10 and subdivided to allow 16 billable lots on only 4.4 acres. We ask that you request, consistent with the precedence of the planning commission, we ask that the council should approve the rezoning of the Goff property to Art 10. Thank you for your time and attention. Continue to be bold and brave.
My name is Cindy Person. I just wanted to let you know, I'm here this evening representing the adjoining landowners to the Goff property as their attorney, and I wanted to let you know that we are deferring all of our comments, both for me on behalf of them and for Keep It Green, until the Item 7A public hearing portion. Thank you.
Morris Johnson?
Twenty years ago, we came asking for a single-member district, and over the last few months, a group of citizens from Georgetown County has been meeting, trying to maintain these districts. We had a stern August for to draw the district, and so far, he's come up with the six... I'm sorry, seven single-member district. The lines have been redrawn. Some of them were increased and some of them were decreased, but we have the same lines that was presented to County Council 10 years ago. And hopefully, that County Council will see fit to pass these addition or subtraction, and that way, we hopefully that it could be sent to the Justice Department and be approved. None of the council members, district has been changed or crossed over into making them run for... against another council member, and we're hoping that County Council will approve these lines. It's the same lines with an addition or subtraction that was approved 10 years ago. And someone else will present to you the exact changes or whatever the lines are, but we're hoping that County Council will approve this. It was the same lines that has either increased or decreased your district. None of the district has been crossed over. Thank you for allowing me to speak this time. Thank you.
Marvin Neal?
Again, good evening to Chairman Morant and the members of Georgetown County Council. Thank you for this opportunity to provide this testimony tonight. My name is Marvin Neal, First and Third Vice President of the State of South Carolina Conference, NWAACP, and the President of Georgetown Branch, NWAACP. I am a resident of Georgetown County for the last 62 years. 21 years of those service was to the military, United States Army. We are here tonight so that this wonderful democratic process of redistricting is transparent and that the voices of all constituents can be heard. Every 10 years, redistricting takes place and is a crucial part of our democracy as it relates to representation. it relates to representation. As we know, the COVID-19 and the Delta virus have created challenges that we collectively as American can and will overcome as we have always done as a nation. During the last census count, this decision of the United States was denied one month of counting. Among other obstacles that, that was placed in our way intensely or unintentionally, there were challenges. Among those challenges, there are drastic changes in the population in Georgetown estimated deviation percentage at a plus 21.5% increase in District 1, plus 10.9% increase in District 2, 13% decrease in District 3, minus 16.8% decrease in District 4, 12.3% decrease in District 5, plus 17.6 decrease, increase in District 6, and a minus 7.8% decrease in District 7. With this in mind, we are asking that the underserved and underrepresented communities are not ignored and that fair representation is in the forefront when drawing the lines in Georgetown County District, County Council District seats. Fulfilling the one-person-one-vote requirement, the 2020 U.S. Census results demonstrate that South Carolina has experienced significant population shift and growth during the past decade. Complying with District 2 of the Voting Rights Act demands that the South Carolina racial minority voters and that of Georgetown proper has an equal opportunity to participate in the political process and elect your candidates of their choice. I will submit the remainder of this to the County Council by mail. Thank you. God bless you.
Randy Ford.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of council. I'm Randy Ford, Representative to Chappie Alumni Association. I believe each one of you have received a packet from us for our requests honoring of our former educator. No doubt that they have impacted lives of so many students. I'm one of the recipient who received the benefit of being educated at Chappie High School. So we ask that you would kindly grant us our request and help us to honor their life, memory, and the dedication that they have done for the citizens of Georgetown County. Thank you.
Chief Elder John Henry.
Good afternoon or good evening, County Council. I'm Chief Elder Minister John Henry. I represent the new Gullah Geechee and Gullah African Village of Georgetown, South Carolina. I'm honored to be here in front of you one more time again to state a fact that in South Carolina, Horry County, there's less than 1% of minorities that's doing the rebuilding or construction project in Horry County. Asking this council to not take favoritism, but take it upon the deep consideration that out of the 1%, just 99% that does building, construction in this area, it is time for all of us to rise as one people. This will be a role model project that if it's go through, and I'm hoping and praying that this opportunity in Paulies Island will be granted up under this county here. Because like I stated earlier, there's only one, less than 1% that really has an idea to come here and build housing and try to set a better standard so that we, as a great people, can rise again and honor. Because out of our high school students that graduate, they need to see something that the minority, the majority are doing in their district to make a better community for all. Thank you.
Joan Dorr.
Good evening and thank you for letting me speak. I'm here to speak about redistricting. My name is Joan Dorr Ray from Paulies Island and I'm on the Executive Committee of Georgetown NAACP 5520. I have been registering voters in Georgetown County for the last 15 years, both for the NAACP and for the League of Women Voters, both nonpartisan organizations. I have seen many citizens who really feel like their vote doesn't matter. So I think it's really important that all citizens feel heard and represented. Redistricting plans should reflect all populations in our county and we must have fair maps and therefore, I hope it'll be transparent and I hope that you will meet with us, the NAACP, and go over some of the maps that we've done. We've put a lot of effort into it and I think they're very fair to everyone that's on the council and to all our citizens. Thank you very much.
Mary Ann Mackey.
Good evening, Chairman Morant and council members. My name is Mary Ann Mackey and I am the Chair of the Georgetown County Democratic Party and a member of the Georgetown County NAACP Executive Committee. I have been a resident of this county for 10 years. I'm taking this opportunity to address you on one of the most critical decisions that you will make, the approval of the Georgetown County Precinct Map. This decision will determine the allocation of political power for the next 10 years and whether or not minority-majority precincts will be constructed in such a way as to preserve the voices of many of our citizens. Redistricting plans should fairly reflect the size of our communities of color and protect the voting power of historically disenfranchised communities. That means ensuring that those communities are neither unduly fractured across multiple districts nor improperly concentrated together in a single district. There is currently a proposal before you that does not dilute the voting power of our communities of color. It will enable them to continue to have, have representation. That will decide critical issues relative to local development, healthcare, racial justice, to name a few. Please approve this proposal. Thank you for taking the time to listen.
Phil Benincasa.
Good evening, council. This is our second time here trying to make heads or tails of a lot of the things that you're trying to figure out. And some of the people that have sit on the council that seem like they're not paying attention or not even paying any mind to the people that are speaking because it doesn't affect them. I suggest today that the people on this council pay attention to the people that are speaking and listen for what we're, we're asking you guys to do is to follow the letter of the law and make sure you make an informed decision because it affects everybody in Georgetown County. My next recommendation is, in the, in the future, if things continue to go the way they go, I would publicly say that the best thing for people to do from Debedu to Wacoma Neck and all through Merle's Inlet and Paulies Island, request to incorporate so that we can make decisions with the Wacoma Neck that's affected directly so council won't have an issue. Somebody living in Andrews or other areas that really don't matter to them, it seems like, and it should, because everybody here is voting for all of you and we'd want you to make an informed decision for the future of this county. Thank you.
Marilyn Hemingway.
Good evening. My name is Marilyn Hemingway, Second Vice President of the Georgetown County NAACP, and I am here to note, as Georgetown County moves forward in the redistricting process, that we operate under a democratic republic government, which means one-person-one-vote, but also equitable representation. Now is not the time to fall back on old habits which created inequitable situations, but to draw district lines that allow all persons to be represented in a fair and equitable manner. Please, we ask you to take due consideration of all recommendations regarding district lines and that we are very aware of the changes in the demographics. And now is not the time to take advantage of those changes and create an inequitable situation, whether that's adding districts or drawing the lines where it makes harder for folks not only to vote, but to feel that they are seen or heard. So I am here to encourage you to be thoughtful, to be intentional, and to take in consideration that everyone in the United States, everyone in South Carolina, and everyone in Georgetown County deserve to be heard, seen, and that their vote counts just as anyone else's vote counts, whether they're in Andrews, Sampet San T, P.D., Yohanna, Plantersville, Myersville, Maryville, the city of Georgetown, Merle's Inlet, Litchfield, and Paulies Island. Thank you.
Rick Hoffman.
Good evening, Rick Hoffman, 366 Camden Circle, Alston Plantation, Paulies Island. I'm speaking tonight on ordinance 2124, the request for a future land use variance. First of all, I'm totally confused how we're at a third reading and there has not been a written site plan or blueprints as to the project and what it will look like presented by the builder himself. I don't understand how you guys can make a educated decision without that information and us, the public, have no idea other than hearsay as to what actually is going to be on that site. But we do know that he's requesting 2.5% more density on that lot than currently is, is permitted, all right? Your responsibility is to make an educated decision for the greater good of all of Georgetown County. And this is a big decision because of the way the land has been, you know, I'm all in favor of an owner being able to develop his property, but within, within a realm of reasonability, reasonability, all right? This is out of line, all right? I'm asking you, and there are many people in our area that are asking you in a strong sense to say no, vote no for this variance. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that was our final speaker.
Thank you, Ms. Roach. Thank you all for your comments. We move on down to the approval of minutes. You all have received the minutes from our workshop on August 24th, 2021. Is there a motion for approval of those minutes?
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Carolina, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Newton. Any discussion? All in favor of approval of the minutes for August 24th, 2021, please raise your hand. Motion carries. Let's go down to the approval of minutes for September 28th, 2021. Is there a motion for adoption of those minutes?
So moved.
So moved by Councilman Newton. Was it Councilman Newton made the motion? Oh, Councilman Anderson. Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Councilperson Johnson, second. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries. The consent agenda, by virtue of approval off the agenda, there's one matter included on the consent agenda which has been approved by virtue of the agenda approval process. That was contract number 20 dash 019, Task Order Number 2 to American Forest Management for Economic Development, reforestation. We move on down to public hearings. Please let the record reflect that I, as Chairman, has a potential conflict of interest in participating in discussion and other matters related to ordinance number 21 dash 24. In accordance with state ethics guidelines, I have provided a written statement indicating such and have filed the same with the clerk of council. We are now going to have a public hearing on ordinance number 2124 and as a result of my potential conflict of interest, I am passing the gavel over to Councilperson, Vice Chairman Lily Jean Johnson to conduct the public hearing. And I will vacate the dice.
At this time, Georgetown County Council will hold a public hearing on ordinance number 21 dash 24, an amendment of the future land use map for a parcel located at 3138 Ocean Highway identified as tax map number 04 dash 0418 dash 011 dash 00 dash 00 from low-density residential to medium-density residential. The floor is now open for public comments pertaining to this matter.
Madam Vice Chairwoman, we have six people who asked to sign up in advance to speak during the public hearing. Would you like me to read off their names?
Would you please?
Mary Beth Klein.
Yes.
Good evening. As you know, I'm Mary Beth Klein. For the public, tonight I represent more than 2,500 citizens of the Lower Neck who support Keep It Green in opposition of the Goff request to upzone to two and a half times its current density. 2,500 citizens of the Lower Neck. You've read their letters, you've seen the petition with more than 1,000 signatures. These citizens are frustrated and angry by the repeated actions of this council to ignore their pleas, ignore the law, and the outcome of which puts them and their families at further risk. What is mind-boggling to all of us is that you as a body agreed in 2015 that the neck was overcrowded and that future development should be focused in the rest of the county where there is plenty of land and an economic boost was needed. And yet, you seem to be ignoring what you agreed to in 2015 by incrementally adding density beyond what is currently zoned. It feels like death by a thousand cuts. An additional 20 houses here, an additional 40 houses there in an area, the lower Wacoma Neck, where the infrastructure is walled. Neck, where the infrastructure is woefully overburdened, as witnessed by all of the accidents on 17 and the flooding everywhere. What's worse about all of this is that all of you seem to have chosen to ignore each other. As public servants, you have the responsibility to protect and serve your constituents, those in your districts, but those in the other districts as well. At the second reading, Bob Anderson, in whose district this request falls, and John Thomas listened to their constituents, read and understood the law, and asked you to vote to deny this request. And yet, three of you, all of whose districts are on the other side of the river and whose constituents aren't impacted at all by this rezoning, voted to approve it. What happened to our council in the past three to five years? In the past, unless a decision had countywide impact, a council member was expected to represent his constituents, and the rest of the council members respected him or her for it and voted accordingly. At the time when we need it the most, when we need to work collaboratively to build a better Georgetown County, our council appears dysfunctional and broken. But it doesn't have to be that way, and we can start a new chapter tonight. Our county can and should support sustainable and appropriate development, development that follows the law for the protection, the safety, and the welfare of all of its citizens. A council government that listens to its citizens and to each other. So in summary tonight, we ask and hope that this council will listen carefully and sift the facts from the fiction. And we urge you, please do not ignore the harm to many for the benefit of one individual. Vote to deny the zoning request. Thank you.
I guess I should have sat a little closer. I'm Dwayne Draper, resident of Paulies Island, also on the board of Keep It Green, and I am also a South Carolina master naturalist. I am opposed to the Goff application to more than double the density of 14.77 acres along Route 17 near Hog Heaven for many reasons. First and foremost, this application for increased density on the Waukama Neck has no plan associated with it. The Planning Department has presented an application to double density without a plan. The Planning Commission has approved and recommended an application to double density without a plan. How can you plan without a plan? This establishes a dangerous precedent for future land use and development. Actually, there may be a plan. There may be a plan to maximize profit by selling a medium-density parcel to a developer with double the number of houses to build and sell. There may be a plan to double the amount of impervious surfaces to increase stormwater runoff and localized flooding. There may be a plan to clearcut more trees required to develop and build out R10 as opposed to R1/2. There may be a plan to destroy forested wetlands, which covers half of this property already with more surrounding it. There may be a plan to increase traffic with who knows how many additional cars and trips per day at an already dangerous section of highway. How many accidents have we seen there in the last couple of weeks? Clearly, increasing the density will allow more homes to be built, which will require more trees to be cut. Clearly, increasing the number of homes by double will increase impervious surfaces greatly, creating additional stormwater runoff. Since there is no plan, who knows whether retention or detention ponds will be utilized, how they will be designed, and who will manage them over the years? What is the downstream outfall area? No idea. Eliminating a large number of water-observing trees and forested wetlands will alter the natural hydrology of this and surrounding properties. The county has embarked on a stormwater study at great expense, but it will not be complete for some time. Reasonable people would say that it is more prudent to pause any future multiple-unit development on the Waukama Neck without having the benefit of the findings of this very important study. In summary, I urge the council to listen to the concerns of your constituents, especially residents of the Waukama Neck, and to deny this application to more than double density. Thank you.
I'm Amy Jones of North Litchfield, and I come before you this evening with an important question. How on earth did we get to a third reading on the request to rezone 14.7 acres located at 3138 Ocean Highway from R1/2 acre to R10? And forgive my repeating, I didn't know someone else was going to ask the question as well. A fair amount of time has passed since second reading of this request in August, so I'd like to refresh your memory. As you may recall, there are multiple speakers against this zoning request that increases the potential density to more than double the current zoning. It's not the comments made by those in opposition that leave me perplexed, as those comments are straightforward and follow some logic. It's the comments by council itself, members here, and Planning Commission staff and their subsequent actions that leave me flummoxed. Comments taken directly from our transcript from that meeting comprise the following language. "In theory," when referencing lot size potential. "Best educated guess," when referring to the lot count. This coming from our Planning Director in response to questions from council. "A further comment by council that the guestimated increase is probably not that significant." And finally, Mr. Goggins' own words. "This rezoned effort would probably receive more favorable consideration if it were submitted as a flex zone and if a plan were provided." Yet despite those very comments and suggestions, and despite the fact that this request lies in the face of the stated advice from our comprehensive plan, this request has been approved twice by a majority at both readings. I believe I speak for the larger majority when I say, "We," Georgetown County, "can do better than this." Approval of rezoned requests based on supposition of what might be, should never be, accepted practice. At best, this request should have been rejected with recommendations. But instead, this council seems to say, eh, no harm, no foul. We'll approve it, ignore our procedures, and take our chances that things magically work themselves out. That's a heck of a risk. Please take the opportunity to correct this wrong, to follow best practices, and vote no to this request. And as an addendum in a response to Mr. Carolina's invocation, I make this request with great optimism and utmost kindness in remembrance of the great patriot Colin Powell. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, members of the council. My name is Beverly Sullivan. I live in Paulies Island. I'm here to talk to you tonight about the increase in accidents along Highway 17 and how higher density is affecting this entire community. Accidents along the Highway 17 corridor have recently become more frequent and more serious. Since the last county council meeting, there have been four accidents at the vicinity of the Goff property. Just yesterday, there was a serious accident at the intersection of Lowe's Foods. Take a look at the picture I sent to you and the text that was reported by WMBF. It depicts our Midway Fire and EMS personnel doing their very best to save a life. But Midway Fire and EMS are bleeding. 25% of their budgeted positions are vacant. Suppression apparatus that requires multiple personnel are going out on calls with one person. Basic life support units are being used to supplement the limited number of paramedics that we have. Overtime and part-time personnel are filling slots that should be filled with full-time, fully-trained professionals. Does this alarm you? It should. With 25% of budgeted positions left open, these dedicated employees could someday be somewhere else when you need them. According to the Georgetown County's website, the mission statement of Georgetown County Government is to promote the health, safety, knowledge, and welfare of citizens, and this mission is best accomplished by, among other things, being committed to the growth and welfare of county employees. Responsive planning for the future with a balanced distribution of services and representing citizens' needs and desires to the fullest extent possible. An increase in density requires an increase in services that are impossible to provide with a vacancy rate of 25%. It's not too late to change your vote on the Goff property. Ask yourself this simple question: Am I committed to the mission of this county, or do I have another agenda that puts all of us at great risk? Be honest, then do the right thing. Vote to deny the Goff property. Thank you.
Andy Halleck from Paulies Island, 20-year resident. I'm here to comment on the request to rezone the Goff property to increase density R10. It is the opinion of Keep It Green's legal counsel, approval of this request is an example of spot zoning. Spot zoning is defined by the South Carolina Supreme Court as, quote, "The process of singling out a small parcel of land for use classification totally different from that of the surrounding area for the benefit of the owners of that property and to the detriment of other owners." The court held spot zoning to be illegal in South Carolina. The Planning Department, in its report, focused on the 2007 rezoning of the colony as precedent for changing the zoning of the Goff property. Unfortunately, you were not given the complete story. I'm going to deviate a little bit, because I'm going to talk about facts also. The difference is, my facts are going to be about the people and the property adjacent to the property that is being in question. I'm not going to talk about Austin Plantation, I'm not going to talk about Paulies Plantation. I'm going to talk about right there, adjacent to that property. First, there is no adjoining property to Goff that zoned R10. None. The colony at plan development with some medium density is not the same as R10. Second, 93%, I'll repeat that, 93% of the adjoining property is not even close to R10 zoning. This is the breakdown. 63% of adjoining property is zoned R1/2, just as the Goff property is zoned today. 11% of adjoining property is a conservation easement, with, you guessed it, zero density. 16% of the adjoining property is zoned general commercial. However, it is really heirs' property, owned by, for multiple generations, by the Smalls family. The family voiced their objections to this rezoning at a recent Planning Commission meeting. 7% of the adjoining property is the colony plan development. So let's go back to the South Carolina Supreme Court's words defining spot zoning. "The process of singling out a small portion of land use classification totally different from that of the surrounding area for the benefit of the owners of that property and to the detriment of other owners." Who's benefiting from this request? Certainly Mr. Goff, since he will sell his property for more money due to increased density resulting from the rezoning. And let me be quite frank, the fact that Mr. Goff may sell this property and make some money, great, no problem with that at all. What about the Smalls family? What are they getting out of it? Owners at the colony. Since there is no plan for land accompanying this request, what about potential environmental consequences of unknown development on all the adjoining property? I advocate vote this down.
My name's Cindy Person. Last time we were together, Cynthia Murray closed by quoting the first part of one of my favorite scripture verses, Proverbs 29:18, which says, "Where there is no vision, the people perish." Tonight, I want to begin by reading the second part of that verse, which is also one of my favorites. It says, "But he that keepeth the law, happy is he." And keeping the law is exactly what I am here to talk about this evening. This decision should be about keeping the law. It's not about giving in to political pressure or other pressure. It's not about making your friends happy. I'm sure Mr. Goff is a very nice man. You may know some of his friends and family. I'm sure Cynthia Murray is a very nice woman. We have mutual friends. I wish I had known her father. He was a pillar of the community, and it sounds like he was a wonderful man. That's fine, but those are not legitimate reasons to grant a zoning change. I stand before you today in a different capacity than usual. I am here as an attorney, representing the individual landowners whose properties adjoin the parcel in question, as well as the public interest group, Keep It Green, and their 2,705 active followers. I sent you a letter detailing a multitude of legal reasons why this zoning change should not be approved. If you haven't read it, I hope you do before you vote, because it's important and it's part of the public record. I'm not going to repeat it, but I will summarize it by making three points. First, your own ordinance says you cannot amend zoning without a justification that benefits the public. Two, state law mandates that zoning ordinances and amendments must be in accordance with the comprehensive plan, which consists both of words and maps. Three, this zoning change would be a detriment to my clients, who paid a premium price for extra-large lots that adjoined land that's zoned with the same-sized lots. I want you to know that I feel so strongly about this, that after 37 years as an attorney from another state, I thought I was retired, I took a full year of my life to take the bar exam, which was no walk in the park, to become licensed here, because I know there are parties with standing who are prepared to go to court, if necessary, to challenge a zoning change in circumstances such as this. And I'm ready, willing, and able to represent... And I'm ready, willing, and able to represent them free of charge. I don't gain anything. Nobody wants to do that. I'll wrap up. Nobody wants that to happen. My clients are asking you to do simply the right thing. Keep this R1/2 acre. It's the risk-free decision. If Mr. Goth wants to build on that property as R1/2 acre, we will cheer him on. Thank you.
Madam Vice Chairwoman, that was the final person who asked to sign up in advance. If you would like to open the floor for other comments.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to make comments in regards to ordinance number 21-24? I declare this public hearing closed.
We now move down to item 7B on the agenda. Ordinance number 21-35, amendment of the fiscal year 2021-2022 budget ordinance. We now have a public hearing regarding that particular ordinance. Is there anyone wishing to comment regarding ordinance number 21-20, I'm sorry, 21-35? The public hearing is now open. Seeing no hearing, any comments? The public hearing is now closed regarding ordinance number 21-35. We move down to resolutions and proclamations. Resolution number 21-32, Ms. Richardson.
Good evening. This is a resolution to approve the GSAT's US-17 corridor study. The resolution is needed for approval of the study, as the GSAT's Policy Committee will be considering this at their next meeting. If you'll remember, Mr. Hoeller with the Waukamaw Regional Council of Government and GSATs was here at an earlier meeting and went over the study in some detail, so I will not plan to do that tonight. As you know, this was an update to a similar study that was conducted by GSATs back in 2003. The study focused on improving capacity and safety in the right-of-way of Highway 17. The recommendations from the study center on the use of a reduced conflict intersection at various locations as a preferred alternative to widening of the right-of-way, and the study makes recommendations for the near term, intermediate term, and the long term. The list of projects in the study are quite extensive, and as we've discussed in the past, the study provides basically a toolbox of options for improvements to the corridor, and projects that are recommended in the study will be reviewed on a case-by-case basis by county council, and council will ultimately have the decision on which projects to bring forward to GSATs for future funding opportunities. The county also funded a companion corridor study to assist with informing and guiding the land use policy for this section of Highway 17, and our goal is to find a bridge where these two studies intersect in order to produce the most meaningful result for the Waukamaw Neck. So there's also some language in the resolution to attempt to tie these two together, particularly in terms of bike-ped connections and walkability issues as well. And I will be glad to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Are there any questions from council? Seeing none, thank you.
Just one thing. I had mentioned that we might want to consider including some language on complete streets, but otherwise, I think the comments by staff are fine and appropriate.
Okay.
Resolution number 21-33. Madam Administrator. Do we need to vote on that one? Do we need to vote? Okay. Okay. You've heard the, we'll move back to your resolution number 21-32. Is there a motion regarding your resolution number 21-32?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve resolution number 21-32.
The motion by Mr. Thomas is there? Second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Newton. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I would just offer that, as I mentioned to Ms. Richardson, would like to include some language about complete streets that be added to the proclamation.
Mr. Goggins, could you repeat that, please? I didn't catch that.
Language be offered as an amendment to the proclamation to include consideration of complete streets and any improvements, significant improvements, to Highway 17. And complete streets, by definition, are street improvements which not only include the roadway, but also include pedestrian and bicycle pathways, landscaping, et cetera.
Can we do that now, vote on it to amend, or do we have to do it when we come back? If we amend this resolution?
So, is there a motion to amend the resolution with the?
Can I make a comment, please?
Sure.
I think what you're asking for on this amendment is going to be, am I lost? No, there it is. It's back. My mic doesn't work all the time. This amendment is going to, is going to impact the design of what GSATs has done. Would you concur with that, Steve?
Well, actually, the GSAT study does stipulate or offers that complete streets would be used as part of its design, and I just would encourage the county to go on record as reinforcing that commitment.
But have they done that in the design that we've reviewed?
Yes.
Okay. That's my point, plus, I'm sure that's going to be a big placeholder financially, and based on the traffic issues we have on 17 right now. If you, if you're telling me that it's not going to impact what we've seen, or the cost estimates of what we've seen, then I guess I can, I can go along with that, but I'm not, I'm not sure.
Well, I'm not sure either, Councilman Anderson, but I can say that SCDOT statewide has adopted a complete-street policy. It's referenced in the study, and I'm simply advocating that the county also advocate for complete streets as well. If we're going to improve a section of Highway 17, it should include pedestrian pathways and walkways. That's, I think, good policy.
What we may be able to do is just have Ms. Richardson try to clear the comments up that both of you are making. Ms. Richardson, remind commenting on the comments from Representative, I mean, Councilman Anderson and Councilman Goggins regarding the streets.
Yes, sir. I was just going to point out what Mr. Goggins stated, that I'm aware that DOT has also adopted a complete-street policy that GSATs would need to adhere to, so any projects would have to comply with that, however it's defined by DOT.
Ms. Holly, is that part of this new Department of Resilience? Is that something that they're flowing down to us?
I don't think so. I think it was just a policy adopted by the state transportation office.
Okay. My point is I just don't want us to get tied up in, in some things that GSATs is not expecting to come out of us at this late point in this exercise. That's all.
We could attempt to, I guess, reference the DOT language or reference the DOT adoption in the resolution to clarify that it wouldn't be beyond what was already in place.
I'll go along with that. Are you okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
So going back, do we need to do a motion to amend the initial motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we amend the proclamation, the original motion, to include language reinforcing consideration of complete streets, and I think that's sufficient.
Okay. If a motion by Councilman Goggins is there? Second?
I'll second that.
Second by? Councilman Anderson? Okay. Let's vote on the amended motion. All in favor of the amended motion, please raise your hand. Oppose? The motion carries. Now, we'll go back to the original motion with the amendment. All in, all in favor of the amended, of the initial motion with the amended? Please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. All right. Thank you. Now we move down to resolution number 21-33. Madam Administrator.
Resolution 21-33 establishes the principles for the redistricting criteria that we discussed earlier this afternoon to meet our redistricting goals. What we're asking you to do with this particular resolution is to provide guidelines to the revenue and fiscal office for them to use in putting together our redistricting map. This basically continues the process so that it can begin and they can get a map to us within a timely period. As you notice, certainly one of the things that's a part of the tradition of this is soliciting citizen input. We will bring forth to you a program to make sure we do that. We will have an established public hearing, and certainly other opportunities for the public to discuss and make comments, voice their concerns as part of this process. So this starts the process formally for the RFA office and moves us forward so we can begin. I'll be glad to answer any questions that you may have at this time.
Any questions for Madam Administrator? Hearing that, is there a motion for adoption of resolution number 21-33?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we adopt resolution number 21-33.
Motion by Councilman Goggins is there? Second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Carolina. Any discussion? All in favor? Please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. We'll move down to third reading of ordinances. Ordinance number 21-24 and ordinance number 21-25. Again, a potential conflict of interest exists with the chairman in participating in those particular two ordinances. As such, I will again turn the gavel over to our vice chair, Councilperson Johnson, to preside over those particular ordinances, and I will again vacate the dais.
Please let the record reflect that Chairman Morant has left the dais and that the quorum for item 10A and item 10B is six members of council. At this time, a report will be presented by Ms. Holly Richardson, Planning and Code Enforcement Director. Ms. Richardson?
Is that better? Items 10A and 10B involve the rezoning of a 14.77-acre tract located along Denny Drive off Ocean Highway in Paulies Island. The property has approximately 125 feet of frontage on 17, and there are also currently nine vacant lots accessed via Denny Drive. The adjacent tracks to the north are zoned R1/2 acre, and tracks to the immediate south are zoned general commercial and planned development. The current, the proposed zoning of R10 allows for single-family dwellings excluding manufactured or mobile homes on 10,000-square-foot lots. The current zoning is R1/2 acre, which allows for single-family dwellings on 20,000-square-foot lots. The future land use map designates the reference parcel as low-density residential, which our comprehensive plan defines as two units per acre or less. Medium density is defined in the comprehensive plan as 2.1 units to five units per acre. The adjacent colony plan development is approved for 49 single-family lots with a minimum lot size of 8,000 square feet, and the lots range from 8,035 square feet up to 26,689 square feet, with a net density for that project of 2.75 units to the acre. No subdivision plot or development plans are being proposed at this time, and one is not required. This request is for a straight rezoning. So the request here is for R10 zoning, and the question before you is, is the R10, 1,000-square-foot zoning district, appropriate for this section of Paulies Island? If the rezoning is approved and it is developed as a major subdivision, then the Planning Commission will review the site plan as part of its normal review process for compliance with the land development regulations at that time. Again, the requirements of the R10 district and of the county's land development regulations would apply if the property is rezoned to R10. Should council consider the approval of the rezoning request, a future land use map amendment would be required in order to facilitate the request from low-density to medium-density residential. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on this item at their July 15 meeting. Several members of the public came forward at that time and spoke against the rezoning, citing the low-density designation on the future land use map and the comprehensive plan, the traffic on Highway 17, the effect on property values on the colony, and stormwater runoff for the project. After significant discussion, the Planning Commission at that time recommended three to two to approve the rezoning, and the commission also recommended an amendment to the future land use map from low-density to medium-density. And I'll be glad to address any questions you have for 10A or 10B.
Are there any questions?
I have a few for Holly. I have a few for Holly.
Mr. Goggins.
Holly, your staff, I think, did a projection of the number of lots that probably could be added or increased by virtue of the rezon. Do you mind sharing that with us, that calculation?
Yes, sir. Based on staff's estimate, and they are just estimates at this stage, twenty-four to twenty-five lots with the current zoning and from thirty-eight to forty lots with the proposed R-ten zoning.
Okay, so maybe ten, eleven, twelve possibly?
Yes, sir.
In your opinion, is this spot zoning if the rezoning request were approved?
Not sure I can offer a legal opinion. I will say historically, we have looked at neighboring lot sizes, and the colony is zoned as a planned development, but it is zoned for medium-density, single-family development, which is what would be allowed in R-ten, and it is adjacent to this tract. Typically, we have referenced that as a reason for an item not to be considered spot zoning.
And this is a question for, that might include our council. Is there anything that would, if the council took action on this and approved the rezon, is there anything about that that would be illegal?
Sir?
Yes, sir.
Any legal advice that I would give the council, I'd want to do an executive session, sir.
Fair enough. Are there wetlands on the property?
We do not have a wetland survey at this time, and again, one would not be required until they proposed a subdivision plan. In looking at the county GIS maps, they do show a large forest of wetland. Of course, that is not an official survey document. I did look at the infrared, which is the aerial photo that shows dark areas of wetlands, and there are certainly some wetlands on the property. We just don't know how much at this point.
Okay, and that would probably further inhibit development of the property or lots?
Yes, sir.
And then in terms of process, you would expect to see subdivision plans, stormwater plans, and all of that would have to meet county and state requirements before approvals were granted?
Yes, sir. They would need to comply with the zoning ordinance requirement for R-ten with the land development regulations, county stormwater ordinance, fire review, all the utilities as well.
And encroachment permit offered by a CDOT that met all their standards?
Yes, sir, because some improvements will be needed to be made to Denny Drive, so that would have to be submitted to DOT as well.
Thank you, Holly.
I, I've got a question, Madam.
Mr. Anderson.
Ms. Holly, part of what I was going to review with my brothers and sisters on council was part of this, and I did a little math on this myself, and I kind of figured that with his fifteen acres of half-acre lots, the math says that he could, on a gross level, develop thirty dwellings. But I also agree that when the requirements for infrastructure, wetlands, setbacks, et cetera are factored in, he will net probably about twenty-five dwellings. And the thing that everybody's been talking about tonight is law and zoning and property size and everything else. And what I want to emphasize is people and population density. So I lay this factor out along with him being able to net about twenty-five lots with what he's got now. And I'm saying, just on average, that you'd have about three people per residence, so that's about seventy-five people. And then what Mr. Goggins was asking about is that if we increased this to ten thousand square foot lots, as I recall, there's, what, four-hundred-and-thirty-thousand-five-hundred-and-twenty square feet in an acre, something like that. And if that comes out to be about four-point-four lots per acre, so that the number there would, let me get back to my notes here, he would have sixty-six lots gross, and probably after the requirements for infrastructure, wetlands, and setbacks that are factored in, he would net lots of about fifty, for about fifty dwellings, or a hundred and fifty people as compared to seventy-five people if we concur to keep him within the low-density level. Does that make sense, those numbers, to you?
Yes, sir. There's certainly the potential for that number. Like we said, a lot depends on the wetlands. Certainly, Denny Drive is going to have to be expanded to a fifty-foot right-of-way. There will be a stormwater requirement, so that will take up some of the property. We just don't know how much.
Your number was just a bit, a little bit lower than mine, that's why I was asking. Thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
Chair will now entertain a motion.
Madam Chairman. Madam Chairman, a question of Ms. Richardson. Do you think in our whole process, procedural issues in the presentation of site plans and development? As you mentioned, the rezoning was not required to present documentation even to the Planning Commission. Sometimes it seems like you're putting the cart before the horse in many cases, because if our Planning Commission has received information or it's been presented to them for this project or for any project, and the Planning Commission initially receives or entertains dialogue on the project, and nothing's ever presented, and they approve it, and it moves forward to council, and by that time, documentation is accelerated. We are starting to review things presented by staff and so forth. Do you think in the future that we could put on the table the thought of reviewing our procedural process? Because, again, anyone owning dirt who wants to exercise their right to develop, in this case, Mr. Goff has to come back and go through all the due diligence, such as everything has been mentioned and everyone's concerned, wetlands, ornamental trees, it could be an environmental situation. You could have had redheaded, cockaded woodpecker on the property and so forth, so you'll have many issues that will take away from what his desire is to utilize the maximum land space. In the future, could we possibly consider and put on the table our procedures in receiving project developments? Because at this time, anyone, an American, a property owner, has the right to at least see what they could do with their land. In this case, he has to go through the whole steps and procedure, and it may turn out that after he's gone through these eight, ten steps, it will then revert back to, if there are wetlands there, if there are ornamental trees there, site plan and development with the roads, so that takes away from his total land availability. And it might revert back to, even though approval for R-ten based on the buildable land, it may revert back to almost two houses or three houses to whatever land space is left. So I think in many cases here, it's our procedural process, and maybe in the future, we also need to think of the steps that we're going to go through from planning permission to when things are moved up to us to make a decision, because you have one half that's received minimum information, and then it accelerates to council where we've accumulated maximum information, not only from staff, but from the citizens. So we have to make a decision. So this is what I wanted to put on the table.
If I'm understanding your question or your statement correctly, Mr. Carolina, you're asking about bringing a site plan before when someone is asking for a straight rezoning as in this case?
At least something, so that we know something.
I think that my only concern there would be that we could not then hold the applicant to that site plan. If the property becomes rezoned to R-ten, then the regulations for R-ten is what would apply in that case. We could not hold him to that particular site plan. We certainly do that process when we look at a planned development or the county's flexible design district. In that case, we do have a specific conceptual and land use plan, and the zoning ordinance allows us to tie them to that specific land plan, and that then becomes the overriding zoning for that property. In this case, Mr. Goff has asked for a district that is already spelled out in the zoning ordinance, so if that district is what is approved, then the requirements we can apply to him would be the requirements of that particular district. I understand what you're saying as well, that once Mr. Goff does his due diligence, he may see that the number of lots is reduced beyond what he originally anticipated, but it wouldn't exactly revert back, but the potential would be there for the number to go down, but he would still be allowed to do lot sizes of ten thousand square feet.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
The motion for Ordinance Number Twenty-One dash twenty-four.
Ms. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve Ordinance Twenty-One dash twenty-four.
A second?
A second.
Any other discussion?
Yes, Madam Chairman, I have some discussion. Mr. Carolina, this first sentence that I'm getting ready to read here is applicable to what you just said, is this ordinance simply requests a change from low to medium density with a preface "on the surface," because I agree with you, you know, this is not the first time that we have peeled back the onion and found out a lot more than what we had to go on when we made a vote, correct? Do you agree with that?
Yes.
Okay. If you read his latest message to council, the landowner attempts to use past decisions made by council with regard to increased population precedent to make his case. And what I'm going to talk about that I haven't heard talked about is what we're doing with population density here, not what we're doing with zoning or anything else. And I say, if I were him, I would do the same thing. His job is to maximize his profits. Currently, he has fifteen acres of zoned half-acre lots, which will allow him to develop, by the math, thirty dwellings. He is requesting that the land should be zoned to ten thousand square foot lots, which it would allow him to develop sixty-six dwellings. That's the math that I went through a minute ago. I agree that when the requirements for infrastructure, wetlands, setbacks, et cetera, and I've heard arguments on that before in the second reading, that his net lots will be about twenty-five, and his, excuse me, his net lots would be thirty. And he has requested that the land should be zoned to ten thousand square foot lots, which will allow him to develop sixty-six dwellings. I said that. I agree that when the requirements for infrastructure, setbacks, et factors, he will net about twenty-five dwellings or have seventy-five people living on that fifteen acres. If he gets his way, when the requirements for infrastructure, wetlands, and setbacks are factored in, he will net about fifty dwellings or a hundred and fifty people, twice the people he would with, at the half-acre lots, and that's net, that's not gross. We are currently working on a redistricting plan based on the 2020 census. The data tells us that the population on the neck has increased by sixteen percent since 2000. In order for the three council districts on the neck to reach their new population goal of nine thousand and fifty-eight people each, I am going to have to give up five thousand people who are mostly located on the mainland. As a councilman on the neck, my job is to keep a balance between what landowners can do legally with their property and the quality of life of the people who live there. That quality is driven by population density. I think you'd all agree with that. Based on the data, it should be evident to my fellow councilors that we have had a population explosion on the neck, and that at this time, it's time to stop allowing landowners from being able to increase the density of their land simply to increase profits. Thank you.
At this time, I'll call for a vote on the motion. Those in favor of the motion for Order Number Twenty-One dash twenty-four, please raise your hand. Oppose? You got it. What was the count?
I count three, four, two opposed, and one who did not vote.
Motion passes.
What was that count?
Three to two.
And one person who did not vote.
Okay, I concur. I just wasn't sure what you said.
There it is. Can you hear me now? Madam Chairman, I would suggest that at this point, just let the record show that the vote was three.
Three, two.
Three, two, one abstention, and one recusal.
So what does that mean?
Three, four, the right one.
I'm sorry?
Three, four, the vote, three affirmative.
Yeah, it's three and affirmative, two against, one abstention, and one recusal, and simply let the record stand at that at this point.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Shall we move on to Ordinance Number?
Well, I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
So. Bear with us up here, please. Let's have some respect for what's going on. So the vote was basically three to two for those who voted.
Correct.
So does that mean that the motion on the floor passes?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I understood what we just did.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Ordinance Number Twenty-One dash- Ordinance number 21-25. Call for a motion on ordinance number 25.
Testing, one, two, three. Ordinance number 21-25 is the same topic. The previous one was the change to the future land use map, and this will be the change to the zoning map for R1 half to R10.
Chair is now open for a motion based on ordinance number 21-25.
Ms. Vice Chair, I make a motion that we approve ordinance number 21-25.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this ordinance? Those in favor of the motion for ordinance number 21-25, please raise your hand. Opposes, please raise your hand. The vote is three to two.
Madam Chairman, is Mr. Carolina recusing himself from that one or abstaining? He was not at the table.
Should I just ask for his vote or take the vote over?
Ms. Carolina, are you aware that they took a vote on ordinance 21-25 in your absence? You were not at the table. Were you recusing yourself from that one?
No, no.
You're abstaining?
Yes.
So the vote again is a three, four, two against, one abstention, and one recusal. Is that correct? Madam Chairman, is that your understanding?
Yes, it's the same as ordinance number 21-24. Motion passes.
Please let the record reflect that I have returned back to the dais. And I understand council has completed down to item 10C. Is that correct? I guess I may have a legal issue here. Is there a possibility that I can have a brief discussion with council and the administrator? Yes, yes. Let's take a five-minute break. Is that okay? Maybe have a five-minute break and get a rest of break? Okay, thank you. We are back on the record. It is my understanding that legal counsel has some clarification on the previous vote, so I'm going to recuse myself briefly so you can clarify that particular point, and then I'll return to the dais.
Thank you. All right, council members, I want to clarify something. Earlier, when you asked Mr. Anderson about the vote, I wasn't trying to be cagey. Because we, in my response, but because we had one recusal and one abstention, and then we had, what was that like, just five members voting, I was trying to run through rules and procedures and some of the things I understood in my head before I answered, which is why I said, let's let the record simply show what the outcome was, because then the record would speak for itself. The reason that Chairman Moran also asked if he could have a moment with Ms. Christian and I is because I think it also raised in his mind a question under the rules of procedure. So we have consulted the rules, and I want to read with you so that it is part of the public meeting here. This is from the model rules of parliamentary procedure for South Carolina counties. Okay, this is what you follow. Any ordinance resolution or motion, unless otherwise required by these rules or by state or federal statute, passes if it receives a simple majority of the votes cast. Okay? So it did receive a simple majority of the votes cast. There can be an issue that arises when you're trying to figure out the difference between votes cast versus those present and voting. And because Mr. Moran had recused himself and wasn't present, that raised the question, but we've clarified it is a simple majority of the votes cast. And then also, it explains why when Mr. Carolina earlier was not at the table, I had to ask, are you aware that they were voting? And did you mean to leave or refuse? So that was the issue. We've addressed the issue. And again, referencing the rules, it passes if it receives a simple majority of the votes cast. And I thank the council for your patience on that.
So the vote stands as it was. It passed, and that's the way it should be. If it was three to two in favor, the motion passed.
Yes.
And that's as it should be.
Yes, sir. And again, thank you all for your patience. I wanted to make sure it was clear, and I wasn't trying to be cagey earlier when I said, just let the record show the outcome, because then, you know, if there was an issue, the record would speak for itself. But we've got it cleared up. Thank you. And poor Mr. Moran, we keep running him off. Maybe he can come back now.
Thank you for the clarification.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Please let the record reflect that the chairman has returned to the dais. We'll move on down to first reading of ordinances. Ordinance number 21-36, an ordinance to declare as... Oh, 10C, okay. My apology. I thought we already passed this. We'll go down to Ms. Langston. My apology. Definitely did not want to deprive you. We move on down to first reading of ordinances. Ordinance number 21-36, an ordinance to declare a surplus of tract of property owned by Georgetown County and located in the intersection of Dozier Street and High Market Street in the city of Georgetown, and to authorize the county administrator to sell the property in a manner as prescribed within ordinance number 20-32 Georgetown County Procurement Ordinance. We read into the record also ordinance number 20-37, an ordinance authorized the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of tax and incentive agreement by the Mount Georgetown County, South Carolina, the county, a company identified for the time being as Project Maverick Company A, and a company identified for the time being as Project Maverick Company B, each acting for itself, one or more affiliates, and/or other project sponsors collectively to companies, pursuant to which the county shall covenant to accept certain negotiated fees in lieu of ever following taxes with respect to the establishment and our expansion of certain facilities in the county collectively to project, the benefits of a multi-county project two, the benefits of the multi-county industrial or business park to be made available to the companies and the project, certain special source revenue credits in connection with the project, and other matters relating there too. And ordinance number 21-38, an ordinance to amend the fiscal year 2021-22 operating budget of Georgetown County. So I read into the records for first reading those particular ordinances. We will move down to item 15C on our agenda, request to name facilities. A request has been made to name several facilities in the Georgetown, in the Chappie area, I'm sorry, in Chappie area, Council District Seven. What we will do, we'll have Dr. Celeste Pringle to make their presentation to council regarding renaming of those facilities on the Chappie campus.
Chairman Moran, members of council, thank you so much for the opportunity to appear before you this evening. I do take a little bit of license with Attorney Moran, because he promised me that this was going to be an uneventful brief meeting, and that I would not be at the tail end of the agenda. That's not the way Chappie alumni behave, but I don't know what school he graduated from. I thought it was Chappie, but I guess not. But anyway, moving right along. I am Celeste Pringle, AKA Dr. Celeste Pringle, graduate of Chappie High School, former teacher at Chappie High School, former assistant principal of Chappie High School, former principal of Chappie High School, and most recently, former deputy superintendent for the schools in the entire Georgetown County School District. I am here this evening representing generations of young people who are doing wonderful things nationally and internationally. And I say internationally, because I do know one young man who is in Korea, in the Navy, a Chappie graduate, a commissioned officer, and so we do have some international contact. So you will find us far and wide. And how did we get here? God gave us life. Modest Kelly Squires, Coach John Henry Spears, Mr. Thomas Multry Jr., Mrs. Josephine Caldwell-Howard, and countless others thought it not robbery to come to the Chappie community where there was no light and brought light to us. In 1957, if it were dark outside, the sun was still shining. If it were raining outside, the sun was shining. If it were snowing outside, the sun was shining. Because in that year, the doors of Chappie High School opened. We brought to the forefront COVID-19, dynamite, arsenic, and anything else you can find that is very deadly. In the person of Mrs. Modest Kelly Squires, she brought with her a staff second to none. And today, you find us raining again all over these United States of America. Had it not been for them, their diligence, their vision, their mission, to see that little boys and girls in the outlying areas of the city of Georgetown could have opportunities to do whatever they wanted to do, to dream and to make those dreams come true, perhaps we would not have a Marvin Neil, who people would like to sit down and shut up, and several like him. But we are today who we are because of those individuals and others. We simply request of you to take our request at heart, so that when we pass those facilities, we could say to our children, this is where we started, and this is how you are where you are now. And always remember that there is nothing, there is nothing that you cannot do in this life with the right opportunities and the right individuals mentoring you, nurturing you, and letting you know that the sky's the limit. We thank God for them. We thank God for them, and we thank them. We didn't thank them enough. They were our parents, they knew our parents, and so we have several sets of parents. Thank you, council, for what you do. This is a thankless job. We're not going to sue you, but you might get sued. We thank you for what you do. We look forward to a favorable reply from you in the very near future. Thank you so much for your time. I look forward to the next council meeting. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Pringle. We appreciate your presentation. And I know you wanted to stay and listen to everything which goes on with county council, so that's why I wanted to move you down to the end. And I'm sure you appreciate that. Now, you learn a lot about the county. But with respect to the request being made by the community, the community is really asking that the health complex at Chappie's campus be named after its first principal, which is Modest K. Squires. And they also requesting that the auditorium, which sits within that particular facility, be named after its band director, which is Thomas Multry, and the choir director, which is Ms. Josephine Howard. And also, the community requesting that the football field, which lies on that campus, also be named after its coach, which is Coach Spears, who won the football championship at Chappie High School, I think back in '94. And he started the basketball program and the football program at that particular school. So that's what the community requesting, that the facilities be named after those particular individuals in those particular capacities. So with that being said, are there any comments or questions regarding it? Is there a motion regarding the request?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the request.
We have a motion to approve by Councilman Newton, is there a second?
Second.
Yeah, the second by everybody. Any discussion? Okay. All in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you again, Dr. Pringle. And thank you, council persons. Is there any further business to come before council? Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting? We got, okay, I'm sorry, yes, what other?
Just a reminder to council and the public, the November and December meetings will be held at the old courthouse at 129 Scriven Street. We bid Howard Center farewell for now.
Thank you, Madam Administrator. So now is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Oppose? Stand adjourned. Thank you.